Matt, you look so serious. We have a lot of items we're going to have to add to the agenda tonight during the meeting. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, I am.
And I want to call the meeting to order. And before we begin, I would like to ask the town manager to read the disclaimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a reminder to everybody that we are recording this meeting. So if you could please state your name and the street that you live on before you speak to introduce yourself. That would be very helpful for our record-keeping purposes. If during a public discussion you would like to make a comment, we ask that you please use the raise hand function so we can keep track of who would like to speak. And we will call on you and ask you to unmute yourself. If there is any technical difficulties and for whatever reason we have to cancel the meeting or we get interrupted, I will immediately disseminate a new meeting link for people to rejoin and we will restart the meeting on a new link.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. And we will start with our public comment period. If there is any resident or guest who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. Or I don't, Mr. Manager, is there anybody?
Nobody, except that I did get two letters that were sent to me over the weekend. I don't know if you want me to read them aloud to you or just give you the...
Just do a summary, please.
Sure, so I got two letters, one from Quinn Wilbur, a seventh grader in Somerset, and another from Ryan, no last name, but a fifth grader at Somerset, who both asked the council to consider extending the pool opening, explaining that they really enjoy using the pool. And they relish the opportunity to play with other kids because they're not getting that opportunity at school this year.
And just for the record, I got, this is just two of them, but I also got some personal notes, which are like the, it's the best thing that's happened to me on the council in a long time. It's so adorable and so wonderful that these kids are feeling empowered.
Well, let's make all that a part of the public record. And you might want to try to email them and tell them that, just so they understand what government's all about.
Okay.
Jeffrey, if that's okay with you, I would love to post on the listserv because that's where most of them posted, just to thank them and explain that.
Yeah, well, why not?
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Why not?
Thank you.
Okay, great, great idea. Okay, the next item is consideration of the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. The next item is to present a ceremony or resolution to former councilor Panner, is he on?
Let's see, I don't believe so.
Okay, well, why don't we move to the next item and I will try to text him. I will try to text him to see if he's going to be on. The next item, public hearing motion to approve final payment to Balladamas Architects for services rendered as project manager of the Town Hall renovation project in the amount of $4,543.75. Councilmember Ziegheiser, is that yours?
Yes, that's mine and the project is done, that's Blue's final bill to us.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Council member, is Peal on?
That's what I just wondered.
I don't have her on here.
I just, I texted her, you know, we were starting a little earlier, maybe.
Okay, Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions? You're muted, I think.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
No questions, no.
Okay, thank you. Are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Nope.
Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
Sure, I move that we approve of the final payment to Balladamas Architects for $4,543.75.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Jeffrey, can you give us a little tour of your office if we have time? I never saw...
Why don't we do it after the, after...
I'd love to see the quilt.
Or if there's, okay, cool, I'll show you the quilt. Is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to confirm the following appointees as nominated by the mayor to the Town Budget Committee, Anne Kelly Bolton of Cumberland, John Medelia of Surrey Street, and Phil Young Greystone, who is designated to be the chair. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
No, but I'm very grateful to the Budget Committee for its excellent work.
Thank you, Councilmember Ziegheiser.
I echo Marnie's sentiments, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, I guess Peal still isn't on. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. And Councilmember Barr?
Looks like a great team, no questions.
And we will, of course, miss you, but you will be...
I think I'm on a turn to feel the liaison.
Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Nope.
Hearing none, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we confirm the appointment of those listed in the agenda, Bolton, Medelia, and Young, to the Budget Committee with Phil Young being the chair.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, okay.
Can I just take a moment here, Jeffrey, and ask the council or say something? We are scheduled to do quarterly reviews of the budget over this next year because we thought the year might be a little unusual given the major recession we've had. And so our first quarterly budget review is scheduled for October. That was one of the reasons we wanted to get the Budget Committee completely in place in September. Do you all want to review, do the quarterly review as part of next month's council meeting? Or would you prefer to do it during a work session? Or would you like to have it as a totally separate meeting? Any thoughts?
Marnie, do you have any, what are your, since you're closest to it, might you share what you think is best?
Well, I think it'd be a little long for a council meeting. So, and I don't know how many evenings people or times people want to commit. So my suggestion would be that we take part of the October work session and spend it on the quarterly review.
That sounds good to me. Hey, Franny!
Well, why don't we schedule, we'll skip...
We have our October work sessions scheduled yet?
No, no, we've only scheduled the September one. We're usually just scheduling them a month ahead at the moment.
Okay, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I texted former councilor Panner. Did anyone ever tell him about this? Because he doesn't seem to have known, but he says that he can, he says he's in a T-shirt, but he could attend by phone. Would you rather that we invite him next month?
Yeah, maybe give him a little time to, yeah, right. What do you think, Jeffrey, what do you think is best?
Well, if he's, if we've heard him at the last minute, why don't we do it next month? I just said to say we can do it next month. We will let you know. Because, I mean, you don't want him to attend by phone, you want to see him, so...
Perfect, I, good idea.
Okay, great. So now we will turn to item number seven, public hearing motion to consider an application by Dan and Aviva Rosenthal for an exception under section 112-37 of the town code to allow for a 48-inch fence in the front side yard at the property located at 5813 Surrey Street. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. I believe we have the applicant here. The applicant met with us in early 2020 and were given a fence permit at the, I believe I included a picture, but it is, their house is on the corner of Surrey and Cumberland. And so on the Surrey side of the street, the fence is on the right side of the house if you're facing it. And it is to the side of the house and extends into the front yard. And so technically by our code, there are certain restrictions on where the fence and the height of the fence. And so the fence was built at a height higher than what our code allows. Our code typically allows only 42 inches, a maximum height of 42 inches within 39 feet of the face of the curb along Surrey Street. But there is a section of our code, if, for a special exemption, to allow a fence to be up to 48 inches. And I'll let the applicant expound on it, but...
But before you go forward, Mr. Town Manager, Mr. Town Attorney, isn't this a hearing that we need to record and all that?
Yes, yeah, this hearing is being recorded, so everyone is aware of it. The whole Zoom meeting is being recorded.
Okay, because we didn't read, we didn't read the disclaimer.
That's right.
Is it okay to move forward?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we can just note that for the record now. But this is a hearing and, you know, the hearing begins with presentation of the staff report, which the town manager has given. And next we'll turn to the applicants to allow them to present their case. And the applicants should please know that the council has had the opportunity to review the application in advance. So you need not restate everything that's in the application, but please feel free to state what you'd like to state. After that, the council will ask questions of the applicant. Then after that, if there's anyone else attending the meeting that wants to make a comment or ask a question, they'll have the opportunity to do so. Then the council will deliberate. And I'll just point out that, as Matt noted, under the code, the council can grant what's known as an exception, similar to a variance, but it is called an exception because the criteria in the code is a little different. There are several reasons why the council can grant an exception, but the specific reason that the applicants are relying on provides in the code as follows. In the case of a new or replacement fence to be placed or constructed in a front yard, the council may approve a fence that is up to 48 inches in height, measured from the ground immediately under the fence. And so as Matt noted, you know, the code ordinarily requires a height of 42 inches, no higher than 42 inches, but council can grant an exception up to 48 inches. And the only consideration the council has to make according to the code is to consider the open streetscape purposes of the code. In other words, in deciding whether the additional six inches can be granted, the council should consider whether those six inches would obstruct with the open streetscape purposes of the fence height restrictions. So with that said, the applicants can go ahead and present their case, please.
Unless, is the town manager, did you have anything else to add?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we will turn it over to the applicants to comment on the report or add any additional piece of information. Thank you for attending.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Matt and Ron, and hello, everyone. And good to see everybody without masks on for a change. I think as this item is listed in the agenda, I think kind of highlights where some of the confusion around this situation stemmed from in that it is rightly described as a front side yard. And in the town code, it is a little unclear, at least it was to us, that where we were building this fence was considered a front yard. So as Matt noted, we met with him at the Town Hall early in the year for the very reason of trying to avoid any issues like this in an effort to really, as those who have been on the council for a while know, we have had some fairly arduous permitting experiences in, since we bought the house in 2017 and we really were trying to be proactive in avoiding those. There's our star witness, our very rambunctious puppy, which is the reason for the fence. And the reason why we sought to increase the height of the fence from the original 42 inches that was in the plan as submitted to the town, the Historic Preservation Commission, and to the county, was because of that guy who we were advised rightly, I think, is an escape risk. And so we sought that change to the original plan, submitted that to the Historic Commission, who was the first body to review the plan as a predicate to the town's consideration of it. They approved that, as did the county. And then we updated the town to that effect. Doug, the consultant to the town, pointed out that the regulation is, as Ron noted in the code. And as I say, we understood that that portion of our property was a side yard. As I laid out in my email to Matt and to Doug, we understood that at the distance from the curb where the fence is, that we could in fact build it up to 48 inches. We laid all of this out in an email. The response that we got was, okay, we're going to look into that. And then we got the permit. And so when I use the word relied on, we relied on that as an indication that what we had laid out in the email was accepted by the town. If there was some aspect of our interpretation of the code that was inaccurate, we would have rightly, I think reasonably assumed that someone would have pointed that out to us. So we went ahead, had the fence built at 48 inches. And then we're informed after that that it was not in compliance because it had to be 42. So that's kind of the background. We would really very much prefer to have a 48-inch fence, primarily because of our friend Brady here, who just came to visit. I don't know, Aviva, do you have anything to add?
No, I would just say, I'm sure, the only thing I would add, yeah, for anyone who's walked by our house, our dog can actually put his hands up and all the way over. So we really feel from a safety perspective that our 48 inches is more safe, to be honest, from a community perspective. And the other issue, and I don't know, not a lawyer, so I'm not sure how to define this, but in terms of the fence itself, when people are looking at it, you can't really see the fence from the street. I know you guys mentioned that in terms of it being considered the front yard. It is virtually invisible, except for the, one of the portions as you're walking up to the street, it is completely covered in greenery.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I actually walk by the property practically every day with my dog. And so I've had a chance to see it. My question is actually more, is Doug on the phone? Not on the line? Because when I read through the paperwork, it seemed as though the applicant pretty consistently talked about 48 inches. And the HPC permit was 48 inches. And then I got a little confused in the last set of email exchanges about what it was Doug said was fine. So that's, so...
I think Doug is on the phone. Could, Doug, can you answer?
Well, you're getting Doug, can I also, so the only other question I have is I believe the applicant has said that there are a few spots where the fence is actually higher than 48 inches and that you plan to make it 48 inches across everywhere. Is that, is that, is my understanding correct?
Thank you, yes, for raising that, Marnie, to clarify on that point. The posts, some of the posts at least, are in excess of 48 inches. And we would be prepared certainly to lower those and bring them down to that height limit. The, to clarify though on that point, maybe Ron or some, or Matt can help with this. The point at which the yard becomes a side yard versus a front yard, as we understand it, is the front plane of the house, as we understand it now. So the posts that would need to be reduced presumably would be up to the point of the front plane of the house and not further back than that. Fair...
That's correct.
And then I think Doug is on, Doug, did you unmute?
I'm here.
Did you, did you hear Council President Shaw's question?
I didn't hear everything, could you repeat it?
Okay, Marnie, could you restate it?
Yes, I'm sorry if I'm going to sound like I'm rambling a little bit, Doug. When I looked through the paperwork that the council was given, it looked as though the applicant pretty consistently talked about 48-inch high fence. And that's what the HPC approved. And there was some correspondence between the town and the applicant toward the end of the process where there was a 48-inch in the applicant's email. And I was trying to understand in the end what you recommended to Matt.
I didn't make the recommendation to Matt, I just presented him with my findings, which was that the application that was submitted shows a 42-inch fence 30 feet behind the curb. And the permit that was issued said the fence would be 42 inches within 39 feet of the curb. So based on that, I went out and measured it, took the photographs, and presented the information to Matt.
I didn't see the application that said 42 inches.
Marnie, we can't hear, we can't hear you.
I said, I don't know that I saw the application that said 42 inches. Let me let others ask. I think I've kind of made part of my point here that it was a little confusing to read through the emails.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ziegheiser, do you have any questions?
Yeah, that's actually the first that I've heard of the application to that height of the fence. And frankly, they're just, I have to say, from the town's perspective, there just doesn't seem to be much that's very clear, at least that I see, about the expectations in the file. It seems what we've gotten from the owner, the resident seems very clear to me, but not, not in terms of our own communication with the owners. And I can see why then there's so much confusion.
Did you, did you want someone to answer that question?
I think it's just something that maybe, I don't, it's not really a question. It's more, I think it's something we may need to just get better at, you know, because our code is confusing. And when the residents try to understand it, just us pointing people to the code, I think sometimes is just not enough. I think we might need to do a better job of being sure they understand what's in the code. Clearly with this, there was a miscommunication.
Okay, well, that will be a good topic for a future work session. Councilmember Peal, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I'll go a little farther than Barbara. I think it seems like the mistake might have been on our end. And it seems like the applicant, from what we've seen in our paperwork given to us tonight, the applicant was clear that they were going, planning to build a 48-inch fence. And we issued a permit for that. So I guess, I mean, we've talked about this for years, about how it's difficult to understand this language in the code. And I think in this case that, anyway.
So did you, did you...
I have other questions for the applicant. I'm ready, when we wrap it up, to talk about an exception.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions?
My question might be more for Ron. If we were to grant an exception, are we able to phrase it such that it's not a permanent exception so that if a new fence is put in 20 years down the road and the rules at that point are 42 inches, they would have to comply, they'd have to get a waiver again to go past that? It's possible. With respect to variances, for example, some towns will record among the land records of the county, the variance decision with conditions. And a condition could be that the variance is tied to the applicants, let's say, so that it must be, you know, removed when the applicants move out. But the town of Somerset code currently is not set up that way. And so I don't think it's an option for the town council at this time.
All right.
Certainly something that could be added to the code when we go through amending this provision.
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Circo?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to clarify which fence we're voting on. If that's what it was done, I went live property. And there are two fences in your yard. There is one on the Surrey side, which is indeed largely obscured by vegetation from Surrey. There's another one that is visible from the Cumberland side that for you is at the back of your property because your front door is on the Surrey side. Which fence are we talking about?
The fence we're talking about is the picket fence, the Surrey face, the Surrey side of the property.
So it's the Surrey side of the property that is obscured by vegetation?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms., are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
The only question, or no, nothing from anybody here other, the only comment I did get was from the neighbor at 5809 Surrey Street, which wanted me to let the council know that they wanted to go on the record saying that they fully support the request for the exception and that they had, they had heard about the plans to make it 48 inches from the Rosenthal's.
Okay, thank you. So before the council debates the application, I think I'm required to give the Rosenthal's... to give the Rosenthal's an opportunity to rebut anything if they would like. She, no, okay, thank you very much. So at this point, council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I will.
Yeah, Franny, I, I just, can I make one more comment in light of Marnie's comment? The caps, you know, or the posts, I have to say, don't, they, what was Ron's language? They don't visually impair anything. And I would, I'm inclined not to have the posts cut down myself. I think this is a mistake that the town, that we, the town made. And to ask the residents to go to an additional expense of replacing posts when we weren't clear, I, I don't think is really fair.
Okay, thank you. With that, Councilmember Peel, you want to make a motion?
Um, I guess I would like to make a motion that we grant an exception for a 48 inch fence. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't make a note of the house number on Surrey Street.
13, 5813.
Thank you, 5813, sorry, Street. Because the, the fence will not interfere with the streetscape purposes of our code.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask for a second, Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes, it is. I was wondering, looking at the site plan, which is in your meeting packets, item number seven at page eight. If, just for purposes of the record, to be clear, if we could demonstrate what portions are going to be 48 inches versus 42? Because there's, there is a bit of fence, well, it's, it's hard for me to see this on the computer, but the Xs show the fence location. And Doug and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong. So the site plan shows along Surrey that there was to be an open picket fence, 42 inches, 42 inches. But that section in front of the face of the house is now going to be 48, is that correct?
Are we not voting on the fence as it stands now, Franny?
The intention of my motion is to leave the fence as it stands now.
Which is, which is fine, but you see, we've got a site plan that has been approved and that is a compliance document.
Well, I guess, I guess my question is.
Site plan is accurate now.
So how can she phrase her motion?
I'm sorry, what, can I just ask Ron a question here? My understanding is the same understanding that was referred to before, that once you get, could I, can we bring that back up, Matt? Once you get to the plane of the house, that then you, from the plane of the house and backwards, then becomes side yard and the front yard would extend along the plane of the house across to the, the property line. So to the extent that it is along the side part of the front yard, I guess that is the part that has been built up to 48 and also the front part. So I think specifically what we're talking about, if I'm looking at the screen, is the part that attaches to a retaining wall in the front edge, goes over to the corner, the property line, and then goes back to the plane of the house, because that's the only part that might, I would understand to be non-compliant.
Okay, and in the northwest corner where it's labeled six foot fences, none of that beyond the front facade of the house, Matt or Doug?
Well, it didn't look it from the computer.
No, that, that's, that's not, that is, that, that part is in compliance.
Okay, so we're just, so just this, this portion that, that is marked three feet, six inches on the site plan, we just need to change that to 48 inches in front of the front building line?
Yeah.
Okay.
So my, my motion is intended to provide an exception to the rules as opposed to an amendment to the fence application. So I'm not, I'm really talking about turning the 48 inch fence into a compliant fence, into a, an accepted fence up to the front of the house. And then from the front of the house backward, it becomes a compliant fence. So we don't have to do anything about it, is that, isn't that right, Ron?
Yes, that's right. And then I'm envisioning that the, the council's approval would be accompanied by this site plan, which, you know, we can just mark up by hand and add.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fun.
My site plan to the file.
Yeah.
So Ron, what language can you add to her, her motion?
The motion was good, yeah, don't, don't have to add anything.
Okay.
Legally and technically sufficient, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, is there further discussion?
Well, I guess we can discuss Barbara's point, this point, since I didn't include it in my motion, but we could make a second motion, I guess, if we wanted to discuss that separately. Would that be better procedurally, Ron?
Yes, there's a motion on the table, so. Now the discussion is on this motion.
I understand. I was trying to figure out whether we wanted to talk about amending it or not, and I'm suggesting we talk about it as, as I made it.
Okay, so Ron, do you suggest an amendment to the motion to base on what?
No, Mr. Mayor, no, Mr. Mayor, we can go ahead and proceed with the vote on the first motion.
Thank you.
So is there further discussion on the motion? Council President Shaw?
Yes, I just want to be clear that, in fact, setting aside the posts, the fence itself is 48 inches, that we're not dealing with a fence that's 52 inches in some sections. I, I just don't know, and I think it's important to clarify right now that.
So Doug or Matt, can you confirm that?
Maybe the applicant can.
I, I, let me, let me try to pull it up. I believe that the fence, other than, uh, well, I will show you, when, when Doug measured it, the posts are about 50 inches. And then with the posts, it's 50, 55 or so.
So the pickets are 50 inches? So the fence is not actually 48 inches? I'm just want to.
I, I think at that point where it was measured by the gate, I'm sorry to interrupt. Am I allowed to speak?
Sure.
I, I don't think that that is typical of the rest of the fence. But to the extent that there are other portions that are, where the pickets are higher than 48, as we noted, with regards to the posts, we'd be prepared to bring those down to 48.
Okay, so Council President Shaw, do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to be sure we all understood what we, we were voting on and whether, if we vote on the exception at 48 inches, that we are comfortable that that's in fact what we've, that, that is in fact what we are approving, that's, that's what, that's what's on the ground.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. And now, council, are you, did you want to entertain another, another motion or an amendment?
Well, I'll raise it so we can discuss it. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, although I guess I'd like to ask Ron, but to, to the extent that the applicant has not asked for this, is it appropriate to raise it as an exception on our own?
Raise what, I'm sorry?
Would, is it appropriate to raise a further exception for the height of the fence posts themselves? Or the, I don't know what they're called, the, the hoarding posts? If the applicant hasn't asked for that?
It is appropriate because under the particular section of code that we were applying, the council only has authority to grant an exception up to 48 inches.
Okay.
To, to grant a second exception for the posts, we have to rely on a different code provision. You could rely on 11237A1, which says, in the case of unnecessary hardship, but then you'd have to find unnecessary hardship exists as to why those posts should remain. You, you could find that, you know, the hardship is that, they've already been installed and it would be costly to remove them if the hardship was not self-created. So there's been testimony about the miscommunication. There certainly was miscommunication. It appears to me that this site plan, you know, shows the fence to be 42 inches. So I'm not sure where the 48 change was made. I do see that in the email correspondence, but I, you know, I don't know that this site plan was ever amended, which was perhaps the communication error on, you know, the town side. But again, you know, the, the town may have been looking at a site plan that shows 42 inches.
So Councilmember Peel, would you like to make a motion?
I guess, is it possible for us to hear from the applicants on this point? Before we raise, raise an exception on their behalf without them asking for it?
Is that appropriate, Council, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You, you understand my question?
So, yeah, just to, to reiterate, the original plan that submitted was 42 inches. We then were advised, correctly so, that it would be smart for us to have a 48 inch fence rather than 42, given our, our dog. And that, by the way, is consistent with the Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission guidance and was approved at that height. And that was the sort of, the first body to review the plan. We noted that change to the town, that that had been increased from 42 to 48. We then were issued a permit, you know? So there was miscommunication. I understand the spring was a very difficult time for everybody and we're not like, looking to point fingers or blame anyone. But we were pretty clear in communicating what we understood the code said and what the change was to the original plan. And it's in what I, what we submitted in the letter.
Can I just add, maybe just sorry, to the question of the posts? You know, we did turn in, as you, as you guys all know, having, you know, worked with a contractor, the posts were meant to be 48 inches, as they noted, you know, land is not even. So they're, the posts are 48 inches. Whether or not they found some that went to 50, I, you know, that's something we can deal with. But I would just say, when you look at a fence, the posts are both functional and decorative at the same time. So the installer put the posts a little bit higher, that's, that's how a fence normally looks. It's the picket that is at 48 inches. So I would agree with the people personally, it is an expense to then cut down what are very thick posts to bring them down to 48. It doesn't actually look to me, to be honest, that's not an appropriate fence. Most posts tend to be a tiny bit higher than the picket. So I, you know, all I can say is, I'm trying to understand this, but it, there's a look about them.
I think the, I think the question was, would you like to ask the council to make an exception for the posts?
We, as the homeowner, would very much like to make, ask you all to make an exception.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Peel, are you prepared to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make them, oh, I'm sorry, Marnie is.
I just want to be sure I understand. So the posts are higher than 48 inches, but the little pickets.
Let, let's let her make the motion, then you can ask your question. Because they've asked, they've asked for an exception. So let's let Councilmember Peel make her motion, then please discuss this. Councilwoman Peel, please make your motion.
I would like to make a motion that we grant a second exception for this same portion of the fence to permit the fence posts to remain as installed, which are, I'm gonna say that they are 50 inches tall and that we would use the unnecessary hardship rationale in section 11237A1 to support, to support the reasoning for our exception.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient?
Yes.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, your question, please, your comment.
So my question is just, so the little pickets in between the posts are all 48 inches, is that correct?
I believe if the applicant said, i- if they're not, they will cut to, to 48 inches. So Matt highlighted in blue on the site plan, the portion of the fence that is, is subject to this hearing. And so your approval would be for that portion in blue. You know, the posts could be up to 50 inches, if that's what you're saying, and all the posts could be up to 48 inches. And so that it would be upon the applicants to then bring the fence into compliance and conformance to your decision.
I, I.
Hold on, Council President Shaw, does that, did you have any question?
Very much.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ziegheiser?
Yeah, I was hoping, which I think I stated previously, that given the circumstances, and this was going on during the spring, when things were still complicated and continue to be, that we allow the applicant, I gather, I don't know anything about fence installation, but I, I would like to be able to tell the applicant that we can leave the fence as is and, and take out the number of inches from the motion.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so you'd have to amend, you'd have to amend that. Did you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Well, I mean, I was guessing a little bit, I don't have a height for those posts, so, I mean.
Yeah.
Mr. Town Attorney, wouldn't she need to make an amendment to that motion?
I can withdraw it if you'd like me to do it again.
It's already on the table, so you'd have to vote it. I, I think that Councilmember Ziegheiser could make an amendment to the motion to eliminate the, the inch, the inch amount, is that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, okay, treated as friendly by the movement. Franny just accepted.
Okay, Councilmember Ziegheiser, do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to the, to the motion, just saying, due to the unnecessary hardship specific to this property and these times, I would like the applicant to be able to leave the fence as is.
I'll second that.
Is that, okay, is there discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you. Now, is there further discussion on the motion as amended?
Yeah, I would like to say one more thing about it when it's my turn.
It's your turn.
Okay. I guess I just wanted to also point out that since this is a historic property, that, and without knowing exactly what the reasoning was for their approval of this fence, that if we were to change the appearance of the fence in terms of its symmetry and proportion and everything, that, you know, it, it may look very stupid. And this is another reason, you know, to consider leaving the fence as installed is that in terms of aesthetics, it's already been approved by the historic group. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Dan and Aviva Rosenthal. I'm glad you can enjoy your fence now.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Well, we're glad that Ricky can stay safe.
That makes, that makes a lot of us.
Yes, feel more comfortable.
Next item, public hearing.
Everybody.
The purchase of an electric leaf blower charger and extra battery for use by town maintenance staff in public spaces in an amount not to exceed $2,000 is recommended by the town environment committee. I believe this is Councilmember Circo's initiative. Please unmute, sir.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, this is something that the environment committee has been working on for, for well over a year. It's taken on increased. It's taken on increased importance as the committee has started to understand the issues of the noise pollution associated with gasoline-powered leaf blowers. And I'll turn it over to Barton, the chair of the committee, in just a second. What I want to do as a lead-in is just give an update from Chevy Chase Village. And this is from a report from Chevy Chase Village. The results of a random check on gas-powered blowers by a member of our committee, together with members of the village police, including the chief, to see if they were compliant with the current threshold for noise levels of 70 decibels at a distance of 50 feet from the source. In all 20 cases that were checked, use of blowers violated this threshold. In most cases, the blowers themselves were rated at above 70 decibels, up to 78 decibels in some cases, automatically making them illegal. In other cases, two or more blowers rated at 70 decibels were used at the same time in close proximity. In all cases, the village police ordered the operations shut down. So the environment committee is not proposing that we shut anything down, but they want to propose a pilot of electric leaf blowers for the town government to lead the way on this issue and to assess the utility of these blowers. The noise pollution is a serious issue. The only other insider background I'd like to provide, just from my experience in the Navy and in civilian government, and hearing protection is a big deal. And it is important for us as civic leaders to protect the health of our employees and also to protect our citizens. And it is non-trivial. I know that the Bureau of Ingraving and Printing spends, I don't know, an order of millions in damages for hearing protection issues for employees who have had their hearing damaged over decades of work. And I know we do the best we can and we're continuing to improve the use of hearing protection and monitoring. But hearing protection is an important issue and we shouldn't be subjecting our workers to unsafe conditions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Barton.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's Barton. Thanks. I hope everyone's well and safe. And thanks, Steve, for that introduction. I really appreciate it. It's an interesting thing to learn about what's going on at the village of Chevy Chase and also to learn about what's going on in DC because they've also passed, both have passed legislation to ban leaf blowers starting in the beginning of January 2022. But that is a separate issue at the moment. So in light of the things that Steve said, we have been doing a fair amount of research and I want to share some facts with everybody so you have a full and clear understanding of some, just the facts related to leaf blowers. As you know, leaf blowers are loud. They have a low frequency noise that penetrates in a different way that electric leaf blowers emit noise. And also, they put out VOCs, which are volatile organic compounds, which are cancer-causing. Unlike cars, cars have a catalytic converter, which removes these cancer-causing chemicals. There is no regulations for all these landscaping equipment. And it has been shown that it does cause damage to ears as well as raising of the blood pressure and cholesterol. So there has been science that has shown that. So anyway, with that aside, you know, the 70 dB is a unit that's in a logarithmic scale. So when you go from 70 dB to, and you add 10 decibels, you're basically doubling the loudness. And that means if you go from 70 to 71 dB, you're increasing by 10%. It's approximate. So if you go up to 73 dB, that means you've gone up 30% in noise. And vice versa, if you go down to 60 dB, you've halved, you've removed by two the loudness. So it's quite significant, these numbers. This is not a regular number line we're talking about. So anyway, we went over to we went over to see the leaf blowers and talked to Enrique. I had a Backyard Bounty, which is a quiet landscaper that's recommended by the village of Chevy Chase, some of their quiet landscapers. And he offered to bring over his EGO manufactured battery-powered backpack leaf blower. It's one that you mount on your back and it's for professional or commercial use. And he was nice enough to bring over his. When we got there, I did inspect the gas-powered leaf blowers that were there. And in fact, they did have a nameplate on them that said that they were 73 dB, which means that according to Montgomery County, which only allows dB up to 70 dB, that these gas-powered blowers are actually, I mean, blowers are actually illegal in Montgomery County. So that was an unexpected finding that in fact what we're using in our town are illegal leaf blowers. And as Steve mentioned earlier, that it turns out most landscapers are now using what is deemed by Montgomery County as illegal leaf blowers. And why is that? Well, in general, I think everyone can understand that, you know, when you hear a leaf blower blow, if it's a low rumble, you know that they're just blowing around one or two leaves. But if they turn it up full power, it's very loud and it's doing some serious work, like blowing a lot of leaves. So you can only imagine that a louder leaf blower blows more CFMs, which is cubic feet per minute. That's the other unit I wanted to talk about briefly, and that is the leaf blowers that Enrique is using is about 750, 700 to 750 CFMs. That's how many cubic feet per minute. The larger the number, the faster the velocity, the more leaves you can blow. So it's in the interest of the manufacturers to provide as much power as possible. And obviously, Montgomery County might be unique across the country. So 73 dB might be okay for some other jurisdictions. I don't know. I don't know what it's like in the other parts of the country. I do know that there are a lot of towns that have banned leaf blowers by the dozens. So we are not the first. And it has happened quite significantly in different areas of the country. So anyway, with all that behind us, we, I've been, our committee has been investigating different manufacturers of leaf blowers that are 70 dB and less. And the one that we found and recommend is this EGO blower. So, and I can get into the details of that in a second. But I think that I think it's in our best interests to immediately retire the gas-powered leaf blowers for our town crew. Not only are they illegal and not only are they loud, but you know, we might have serious liability issues going forward because Enrique did tell me that one of his ear is badly damaged and he doesn't have much hearing in it anymore. I can only imagine that it is related to his work. So that was a sad piece of information that he told me. Let's see, is there anything else that... So this is really basically asking the town council to consider a pilot study whereby we would buy, we would retire the three leaf blowers that are in existence now, gas-powered leaf blowers. And in its place, Enrique said they only need two leaf blowers because three was just, one was just an extra, but they only use two at a time. And therefore, we were thinking about getting two leaf blowers. And with that, we would get batteries for those leaf blowers. And these...
Okay, Barton, you're...
Sorry. I was just... So I was just saying that the, I lost my train of thought for a second. I apologize, everyone.
You are recommending two leaf blowers.
Why don't we go to questions now? Thank you for your report, for your presentation. And also, yeah, Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I just want to make sure I understand how many, because we've been through a couple of different iterations, Barton. So right now, you're recommending two leaf blowers. And how many fast chargers or extra batteries or other things?
Right. So that's what I was about to say. So we would need two leaf blowers, we need three batteries per leaf blower, and two chargers per leaf blower. So you could have two batteries on the chargers while you're using one. That's just the idea in general. Now, the reason why there was confusion is that under certain circumstances, if you don't use the leaf blower at full power, then you can use this battery for almost three hours, whereas the charger takes only two hours. So you might be able to get away with just one extra battery per leaf blower. But that's depending on how it's used. So since I don't really know how Enrique uses the leaf blower, if he's using it at full blast the whole time, then we definitely need two extra batteries per leaf blower or three batteries per leaf blower. That was the confusion that I'm now clarifying.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your research.
Thank you. Councilmember Ziegheiser.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that the EGO is the one that's used by Backyard Bounty?
That is correct. And they brought it there for Enrique to test.
And how heavy is it, Barton?
Oh, yeah, it is, you know, probably 50% lighter. It's much quieter.
No, I was wondering about the body weight, because you say you carry it like a backpack. So how heavy is it?
I don't have that number, but I know that the gas-powered leaf blower is probably at least around twice as heavy or significantly heavier.
The gas-powered one, you don't carry on your back, correct?
No, you do. The gas-powered one is on the backpack also. So we're trying to mimic what he's been using and use the same backpack system.
Great. Perfect. Great. That's it. Thank you so much for your research and energy into this project.
Thank you. Councilmember Peele.
I don't think I have any questions on the leaf blowers themselves, but I guess after listening to both Steve and Barton, I mean, I guess I'm concerned a little bit about the workers and want to know, Matt, whether you think they have the appropriate safety equipment for what they're doing for the town? And if there's, if we need to, I don't know, have a cycle for upgrading it or making sure it's being, you know, I don't know whether you're checking or if they don't need to be checked. But if they're not good enough, maybe we need to add that in.
Okay, well, let's get back to you on that.
Yeah.
We'll get back to that. But did you have any other questions on this item?
No, I think it sounds fine. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I sent an article around the council this afternoon, written from the Washington Post seven years ago, about leaf blowers. And our town currently has two-stroke engines in our leaf blowers. They are incredibly polluting and we've been using them heavily. Two-stroke engines leak 30% of their fuel into the air, spraying the fuel into the air. They don't completely process the fuel, which means all the chemicals that are in gasoline are being sprayed onto our property and into the air around the workers. They are, as Barton has pointed out, noisy and are probably damaging the hearing of our workers. So it is essential, really, that we protect them both with appropriate safety equipment, but also give them equipment that is quieter and lighter for them to use.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Not at this time, except it does seem that Barton maybe had something.
Yes, I just wanted to add two pieces of information, which I think are important. One is that, you know, now that everyone in, all the landscapers have been using illegal leaf blowers, that, you know, once the county starts to enforce them so that people can have safer lives, it's going to be a little bit of a change of behavior again because people are used to blowing with illegal volumes of air because they're using very high-powered, too-loud leaf blowers. So what I'm saying is, you know, it will be a little bit of a difference. I think these leaf blowers produce only about 600 CFMs, which is slightly less than what these illegal blowers can do. But having said that, I think also in this recommendation of the pilot study, that I recommend that the town crew use our guarding consultant, if that's what she's entitled or he's entitled as, and consider some changes to the way the town maintenance crew conduct themselves using the leaf blowers. And some of the things that we spoke about in our committee was, one, reducing the amount of use of the leaf blowers from like twice to once a week. And the other thing we considered asking the council to do is potentially not blowing all of the leaves into a pilot to have them removed. But in fact, there is a large literature that indicates that if you are just to mow the leaves on the lawn or just leave them there, as Robin has spoken about, if you mow them, then suddenly they become free mulch for the grass and you don't have to blow them out of the way. So if we instead blow the leaves off the lawn...
Mr. Chairman, thank you for those recommendations, but that isn't what's on the agenda tonight. So that can come forward in the future. But I thank you for that. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I propose that we approve or we proceed with a battery-powered leaf blower pilot as proposed by the environment committee, not to exceed $2,000.
It's a little bit more than that with the three leaf blowers.
Hold on, hold on, Barton. This isn't your time. So Mr. Town Attorney, is that legally and technically sufficient? Okay, thank you. Is there discussion?
Yes.
I think Barton said that that won't cover it, that won't cover the cost. So I think we have to amend the
Okay.
motion. It might be better to approve how many things were...
So there is a motion on the table, so would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, well, I...
Would you want to amend the motion?
Marnie, do you have a clear understanding of how many of each things they would like to purchase?
What Barton said was two leaf blowers, three batteries and two fast chargers. But I thought that the, if you bought the EGO blower, it included a battery and charger. So we wouldn't need to get... It looked like, from what you presented, Barton, that two leaf blowers would each be $400, two fast chargers would be $240. Do you have to do... Aren't batteries included with the two leaf blowers and you wanted an extra battery? That might be a misunderstanding.
Sorry for the confusion again, but originally, the proposal for $2,000 was only for two batteries per leaf blower, which when you buy a leaf blower, a battery is included in that purchase. That's correct. But considering what I spoke about before about not knowing the exact use of a leaf blower, like whether they're going to be using it at full power, if they use it at full power the entire time, then we would need three batteries per leaf blower, in which case you would need more, something like $2,600 or with tax, maybe a little bit more, $2,700.
So Barton, it comes with one and you want two more? Or it comes with one and you want three more?
Comes with one and we want two more. So a total would be three batteries per leaf blower.
Okay. I simplified. So can I page it if we have to?
Can I propose a friendly amendment to Steve's motion?
Thank you.
Yes.
I propose that we authorize the purchase of the equipment needed for the battery-powered leaf blower pilot project. the equipment needed for the battery-powered leaf blower pilot project, including two leaf blowers, three batteries per blower, and two fast chargers, up to $3,000.
Perfect.
Okay.
A second for that.
So I'm going to consider that, Mr. Town Attorney, I'm going to consider that to be a substitute motion. Did I have the right to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to consider that to be the substitute motion, and I believe Councilmember Zueig Hauser seconded it. Is that right?
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Now there's discussion on the motion, on the substitute motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And before we go to the next item, so Chair Rubenstein, please move, come forward with those excellent suggestions for the, in the future, for the future council consideration. The next item, public hearing motion to support the parachute parade event sponsored by the Mother Earth Project on Friday, September 25th at 4:30 PM, to commemorate Global Day of Climate Action, as recommended by the Town Environment Committee. Mr. Chair, do you want to explain your requests, your committee's request, please?
Thank you again. And I'll try to be very brief. So basically, we, there is a World Day of Climate Action, which is going to be activated by millions of people around the world, including Greta Thunberg from Sweden. And it would be great for our town to somehow participate in that, because we are environmentally focused as a town. Originally, I was hoping to have a parade of parachutes of people who made parachutes in our town, and have a walk around the town. But since we don't seem to be making any appreciable progress in getting rid of this COVID, I think people would be very prudent not to be a part of the march. And I think we shouldn't do it. So having that behind us, which is sad, because people are dealing with the same thing all over the world, people are not marching, people are not striking. We wanted to do a Zoom event where we would be inviting people from around the world. As you might know, the Mother Earth Project engages with communities in 75 countries presently. And there are a lot of very interesting stories to share. And I think one of the great things about the present day and age is that people are learning about how each other, in other countries, are dealing with the COVID, how they're dealing with the climate emergency. So I'm hoping to have speakers speak for every 10 minutes from Africa and all over the world. And it would be great to invite the town residents to this event, to just, to participate with some art in the background, speaking out their concerns about the environment, and then listen to the speakers make their short presentations.
Thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councilmember Zueig Hauser.
My only thought, Barton, I know at one point you offered parachutes to residents in the community. And I think you've got a number of people to participate. Is that something that you might be willing to offer up again for this event, and then people could hang them in front of their homes, just to show a, you know, a sense of caring for the world?
Sure. I mean, we did give out 100 parachutes, which that was very exciting. And as it turns out, many of these parachutes were not just from our neighborhood, because we have a cut-through straight Dorset Avenue. So I've been receiving photos from all over the country, actually, from people that picked up these parachutes and took them to their families in Michigan or whatever. They were focused on the Great Lakes, for instance.
Okay, no, I didn't realize you already gave out 100 of them. That's...
Yeah, so there's a lot in the neighborhood already.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm just a little confused about what the council is being asked to do tonight on this, because I understand Barton's presentation, and that it's not a parade anymore, but it's a Zoom conference. And...
Let's let the chair answer.
Maybe I just missed exactly, or just want to know what you're asking the council to do tonight. Thank you.
It's very simple, just for the town to endorse this activity and make a formal announcement to the town in its different ways, through Matt's, the town's listserv or whatever, to say, we encourage everyone to participate in this special event, and as it's the World Day of Climate Action.
Okay, so it's publicizing and otherwise promoting?
Yeah.
The idea, okay.
Well, it's supporting the mission of the...
Well, I know, but in some time, and I'm not trying to split hairs on Barton's project particularly, it's just that sometimes we have, you know, done resolutions, you know, saying formal things, and other times we've donated money, and other times we've permitted the town property to be used. I'm just trying to understand what the town action is that we're being asked to look at tonight. And I didn't get a clear understanding of that, so that's why I was asking about it.
Right. I don't think there's actually an ask for, like, the town to make a proclamation that they support the climate emergency. I mean, yes, that's actually a pretty good idea. I think that's something that we might revisit, but right now it's just to be...
But if, but if, but if the council supports it, then the Mother Earth Project can announce that the, that the town of Somerset supports the, endorses it in any way they choose.
I know. It's just that we don't usually make these into council matters, and...
But that, well, I know, but that's been the, that's the request tonight.
I understand that. I'm supporting what people in the community do. It's just that when things come to the town council, I think it's appropriate for me to ask what the council's role is, and what it means for the council.
Any answer to that?
Jeffrey, I'm asking a question that I, I'm looking at this in the context of the council actions over time, and many other people in the community may have comparable projects and want to come to the town's council for approval and support. And so I'm asking what Barton is asking for tonight. And he has said, I've heard his answer, I understand that, I didn't realize we were going to expand it tonight. And if we are, let's talk about it.
Councilor Serco, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, right. So I understand that what we're doing with this action is officially supporting this as a town, which means that Barton can announce that as part of the event, and also that we can use the town listserv to advertise the event. Barton, in connecting to your event, are we also connecting to the larger events going on, or is that a separate thing?
When you say the larger events, you mean...
How do we hear Greta?
Greta will not be on the call. You know, our, our Mother Earth Project does work with Fridays for Future quite extensively all around the world, but we don't, she's not going to be available for this particular call. I mean, I, but there will be people who are Fridays for Future strikers and marchers from different parts of the world on the call, like from China. I think the only, there's only one Fridays for Future striker in China presently, in Guilin, and she will be speaking at the event. And there's another one, Fridays for Future, in Japan, as well as some Girl Scouts from the United States, and Citizen Climate Lobby, people from Africa. And there's going to be all sorts of very interesting people on this call. So it's going to be, but Greta won't be on the call.
All right.
I guess I do have one more question. Barton, is this something that you're presenting on behalf of the Environmental Committee, or just as, just letting us all know this is something you've been working on?
I know, it is from, it's a recommendation from the Environment Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hearing none. Are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the town support the parachute parade event sponsored by the Mother Earth Project on Friday, September 25th, to commemorate Global Day of Climate Action.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next item is an additional item that was placed on the agenda at the request of the council president regarding a special approval, a special exception to the town pool rules on behalf of disabled residents, I believe. And I believe you spoke with the town attorney about it. So I'll turn it over to you to present.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes. The pool committee was informed, and I was separately informed, of a desire by a parent of a child who has spina bifida about an exception to the pool instruction, swimming instruction in the pool, that they would like to assist their son. And the pool committee discussed this last Friday and recommended that the town approve an exception. And so I asked Ron if he could help us with some wording for this. And I can read the wording that our town attorney came up with. And this goes to, the, in your booklet, item two shows you what the pool committee approved in terms of swimming instruction. And so we're asking for some exceptions to what the pool committee approved for general swimming instruction. These rules may be modified by the town manager and pool manager as necessary to provide a reasonable accommodation. Specifically, a disabled resident may receive instruction from a licensed instructor who is not a Somerset resident, and such instructor may provide in-water lessons without a face covering, provided such accommodation can be provided during a time when there's sufficient pool area available and a reservation has been made. Such instructor and student assume the risk of COVID-19 transmission presented by such lessons.
Thank you. Councilmember Zueig Hauser, do you have any questions?
None. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Serco.
No questions. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Nobody has raised their hand. I don't know if the resident wanted an opportunity to speak or not.
Well, she... Hi, this is Catherine Coleman. Thank you all for considering this. That's all I'll say. Many of you know Johnny, and we found a wonderful instructor who is also a lifeguard and a certified lifeguard trainer. And so grateful for your consideration.
Thank you. Of course, please let it be known that this exception would apply to anyone that meets the same criteria as, as the Coleman child. Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. If there are no further comments from our residents, council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we, the council approve the exception to the town pool rules that I just read, and I can send them.
I think, I think Matt got that. So is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you for the last-minute work on that. The next item, public hearing motion to approve an addendum to the existing contract with American Pool to extend the town pool season to October 25th, 2020, in the amount of $27,688.64, as recommended by the town pool committee, Madam President.
Are you asking me if I have questions, or what are you asking?
What, do you want to present it, or do you want to have...
Oh, sure. No, I can present it. I thought perhaps I could actually turn this over to, well...
To whatever you want to do.
Well, let me, I'll start. Because our pool season started so late, there have been a number of requests by residents of all ages to extend the pool season till October 25th. American Pool is able to staff the pool starting at 1 o'clock. They can't do the earlier hours that people would have preferred, but we'll be doing, it would be a continuation of the hours that are, we're doing right now in September. We do have some credits, because we started late, and I think at whatever point is appropriate, Matt Traulinger can present some data on that. And I don't know if Matt Saft would like to, as pool committee chair, say something more about this. Matt?
Mr. Chair, do you wish to make a comment on that?
Just that we solicited feedback from residents using the two-town listservs, both the official and unofficial. To date, I've received now over 70 responses, of which all except one vehemently asked to have the pool season extended through October, the one that did not said that they don't ever use the pool at all, period. So they're, they felt they, you know, no regardless. But we unanimously recommended this from the pool committee, 100% approval by all members, and really appreciate it, and feel that this is something that is really helping the town in this current environment. I've been at the pool several days, and you see young, you see old. I was swimming next to someone who was swimming with a snorkel today, and on the other side of me was a couple of little kids and their dad playing in the shallow. And it's just, it's, it's great for the town, and I just think, you know, it's something we can do, so I highly recommend.
Thank you. Councilmember Zueig Hauser, do you have any questions?
I, I just want to show you, I know Matt received 70, but I, I received some too. And tonight, you know, it's like the mail that comes. I got two at my doorstep handwritten notes saying, please keep the pool open. And as Marnie and Matt both know, I was a little bit on the fence, because it's, it's a big chunk of change. And I asked Matt to send out something, because I wanted to hear from the kids in the community. And I was so happy to hear from so many children, because I feel that they were really empowered, that they really felt that they could make a difference in changing the mind of the council, and that they could truly convince us, for a variety of reasons that they wrote about, that we should keep the pool open. And for them, it was, I hope, a good lesson in that local government works, and that they could use their voices and speak up, and they will be heard. And for sure, again, I was the one dragging my feet. And they, they convinced me more than ever that we should keep the pool open. I'm ready to keep it open through December, after getting all these... So thank you.
That'd be pretty cold, Barbara.
Thank you.
We do that.
Do you have any questions?
We're going to have to fix the bridge if we do that, right, Barbara?
Yes.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I'll just hope that our budget projections from the Budget Committee for this year are fulfilled, in which case I will have no worries about approving this one.
I have one, I have one comment, Jeffrey, that some of the kids did mention, and some of the, actually, maybe more of the adults, that they would like the water to be warmer as the weather gets colder. And I was wondering if we could be sure that our heater will be able to accommodate...
Well, we'll make sure that that is a topic for our next pool management meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Perhaps the committee will also comment on that in the future.
Great. Many thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Since there are none, council, are you prepared to make a motion?
That we approve an addendum to the existing contract with American Pool, extending the town pool season to October 25th, in the amount of $27,688.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All the, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve the extension of early morning swim through October 25th, 2020, at a cost of $1,793.75, and requiring an additional $85 fee per participant, as recommended by the town pool committee. Madam President, is this for the chair?
I think I would, I would turn this over to Matt Saft.
Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Yes, so we, in years past, early bird swim has always been Memorial Day to Labor Day. Clearly, we did not start on Memorial Day, and similar to the prior motion, we were hoping to continue through the pool being open. we were hoping to continue through the pool being open. There, all, everyone is willing to pay more. This is, you know, we are, you know, we don't, this isn't 100% covered by the town. The residents that do it initially paid $100 each for the period of time from July 11th, when we opened, until Labor Day. Everyone's willing to pay an additional $85 to cover the cost of the guard. Thankfully, American Pools is able to provide the coverage for that one, one and a half hours every Monday through Saturday. And so I can tell you, we would all be very, very happy to continue being able to swim before our kids have to go to school.
Thank you. Madam President, did you have any further comments or questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zuyghauser.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments? Has anybody raised their hand? Thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the extension of early morning swim through October 25, 2020, requiring an additional $85 fee participant.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Next item, to approve extension of water aerobics classes with wet yet fitness at a cost of $1,785. Madam President, do you want to present this?
Let me just say that water aerobics has been popular, and it's great that wet yet can actually provide instructors longer. I think Lucy Freeman is on the line. And maybe Lucy would like to say a little bit more about water aerobics. You have to unmute yourself.
Yes, yes, I did. You know, it has been very successful. You know, our group at Waters Aerobics, they are now able to sign up when they can't come. They're able to cancel their reservation. Then they, other people sign up. And, you know, we have 10 people at a session, and usually we are there, you know, maybe at 9 or 10. Our teacher is terrific, and when she can't come, she has found a sub. Everyone is very happy. You know, the distancing has worked out extremely well. I told Matt if the, our numbers go down, like if it snows in October, we may not have 10 people there. So then we'll release one of our lanes. But as it is, we would like to retain all four lanes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmembers Zuyghauser, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
I just want Lucy to know that I just got an email from my bathing suit supplier that's now offering matching masks. I'll send you the link. No questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
That we extend the water aerobics classes with wet yet fitness at a cost of $1,785. I might just add that the participants do pay for each class. So this is, this would not be the total outlier for the town once all that's evened out.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. The next item regarding the lap lane schedule, I believe. Madam President, you removed that from the agenda, right?
I think the pool committee decided in the end to not go ahead with this plan, correct, Matt Saft?
Yes, the plan had been only if we were able to keep the early hours. But as soon as we were forced to basically go to school hours, we wanted to withdraw the, you know, any changes and just keep with exactly how it's been over the summer and just keep what you've already approved for lap lane use and not make any changes.
Okay, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve extension of the pool monitoring security contract with Skyline Technology Solutions in the amount of $1,320. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, currently, our video security runs through through the month of September and is scheduled to end on October 1st. So this just extends it to November 1st. The only thing I'd add is that the company that we contract with suggested at the end of the year that we look at the equipment and that there may be some equipment upgrades that they recommend and/or some cleaning to the equipment.
Thank you. Council President Charles, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilmember Zuyghauser.
No.
Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Councilmember Serco.
No questions.
Councilor Barr.
No questions.
Mr. Town Manager, has anyone raised their hand?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the extension of the pool monitoring security contract with Skyline Technologies Solutions until November 1st in the amount of $1,320.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve purchase of replacement pool vacuum and necessary connected equipment from American Pool in the amount of $2,538.77. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I will just briefly introduce it to say that there are two separate proposals. One is for a larger vacuum, and the other is for a smaller vacuum. So in your council materials, you should have the invoices for both. I'm happy to turn it over to Charles or Jerry if they wanted to expound on exactly what those vacuums are used for and the differences between the two.
And thank you for attending tonight, American Pool.
Matt, I don't think I have two. Do we have two? Do other people have two? I don't have two. What's the price?
I'll go ahead and share my screen so you can see the two.
Thank you.
And in the meantime, Mr. Blair, do you wish to comment on this? Or elaborate?
I'll be honest, I don't have it right in front of me, too. So as soon as Matt shares his screen, I can elaborate what I say.
Thank you.
So the first is, was this one, the telescopic pole and the leaf eater, the vacuum hose.
Okay.
In an amount totaling $722.39. That was one that Jerry and, there's another Matt that is associated with our town pool at American Pool. So they delivered this to me to say, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, but I think that this one was found to be broken more recently. And then the second is this one, which is the Gemini, which I believe is the larger vacuum for the bottom, the bottom of the pool.
Yeah, so the first, the first document is.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself because we're on the record?
Okay, sorry. I'm Gerald Seiride. I'm the regional manager for your pool.
Thank you.
So yeah, the, this document right here is just for a couple items, the pole, a vacuum hose, and the leaf eater, which is really good for getting leaves out of the pool. And these are more for the manual cleaning of the pool by the guards. Some of these, these items were found to be deficient. They've been breaking down over the year through the, you know, through the use throughout the summer. And then the second one is specifically repairs for the robot vacuum. And we think that both are necessary, obviously for, you know, the guards to be able to spot clean and also just for them to use the vacuum overnight, especially as we're going into fall. And, you know, we're going to see a lot more leaves falling into the pool.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blair, did you want to add anything?
That was just exactly what I was going to go over. So Gerald went over everything. The one, the one proposal was the original for the automated vacuum system, which is the robot, had some components that were just wear and tear and recommending replacement to get that back up to working correctly and sufficiently. And then the other components were the manual vacuum, which is where the guards or somebody else needs to have a hose that doesn't have, you know, duct tape or holes in it and a pole sufficient, since you guys have such a large, wide, you know, wide area in a deep end that they need to be able to reach all the way down to the depth that they need.
Okay, thank you very much. Council President Charles, do you have any questions?
One thing I want Matt to cover before we vote on this.
Barney, you need to be a little closer to your speaker.
Thank you. The one thing I'd like Matt to cover before we get to vote on this item is where we are with American Pool in terms of the credits and which things are actually covered by our credits and which things are not, so that everybody's aware of what we're spending, what extra we are spending.
I can do that. Do you want me to answer that right now?
That'd be great.
Sure. So the first item that you all considered was the extension of the pool. And it just so happens that that amount lines up pretty closely with what our credit was for the pool being closed from the weekend before Memorial Day until the pool finally opened in the second weekend of July. So our credit invoice, which I included in your packet, is currently at $27,433.55. So we have a credit of that amount. And the amount that the extension was, was for, was for $27,688.64. And so what that means is that we would use up our credit to extend the pool, and it would cost an additional $255.09. So by extending the pool, we are asking for an extra $255, essentially. And then the second thing was the extension of the early morning swim, which, let me pull that up. So that was for $1,793.75. So because the participants in the early morning swim are also paying an additional $85 fee per participant as you also pass, the total cost of that to the town will be $773.75, excuse me, $773.75. So the third was a little bit trickier because it's the water aerobics. And as Marnie pointed out, that also has an associated fee with it. So we're paying, sorry, my documents are getting a little mixed up here. The cost of wet yet to extend that was $1,785. There are a total of 20 classes. So assuming, assuming we get eight out of the 10 slots to fill up, that would be $1,060. So I don't, I don't know if it's useful for me to run through all of these, all of these together or not because it's a lot of numbers coming at you without anything in front of you.
Pleasure, Madam President.
There really aren't that many more numbers. I think we've got the last one, which we have not passed yet, well, last, the last two are the, like, $2,500 for the equipment and another almost $8,200.
Marnie, we can't hear you.
Okay, so, so I think the only additional numbers for American Pool are actually the $2,540 that's in front of us with the pool equipment and then the winterization, which is about $8,200. Just so people have kind of a ballpark of.
So, so for the pool activities, we are, we are essentially, when you count the pool opening for longer, the morning swim and the water aerobics, after we factor in the fees that are paid, the town is looking at an expenditure of about $1,600 or so, The security monitoring is relatively straightforward. It's an extra $1,800. And then the last one is the pool maintenance, which we already have in the budget. So this isn't, this is not going to be necessarily anything extra. That's the equipment. And then the next item that you'll consider, which is the winterization, that Gerald and Charles can also explain in greater detail. But those, those are things that we typically have taken care of at the end of the year anyway. And so we've budgeted, we've budgeted in our budget for pool maintenance.
Is the winterization in the budget, Matt?
Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
You'll get a chance.
So altogether, when you, when you, the way that I looked at it is, if, right now, we've spent about $4,000 on pool maintenance. When you look at the equipment that needs to be replaced and the winterization that was recommended, it's about $10,000. And we have $15,000 budgeted for pool maintenance. So we're still on budget there. We're looking okay. Assuming there are no major, major repairs that are needed and no, no further large maintenance that's necessary.
Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you. Councilmember Zuyghauser.
Yeah, I just have questions about, just so that I understand it more than anything. So the manual cleaning that's going to be done by the guards with the telescopic pole and the leaf eater, is that a new piece of equipment that we are buying? Or is that a piece of equipment that we're replacing? Or is it parts? Or what is that?
And you're asking American Pool, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
So the vacuum hose that, that is, became deficient is a 75-foot vacuum hose. That's the manual hose. That's, that is, reaches to the bottom of the pool with a, with a new, the telescopic pole, which is the 1632 telescopic pole. And then the various vacuum heads and attachments, the leaf eater attachment, other manual attachments that you, you have, several of them, will help that reach down and get those items, get the, get that up. And those are recommended because obviously we're extending in the fall. We know we're going to have some more leaves in your, in your pool as we're extending into October.
Those are new parts that will be used because of the extension into the fall. They're not that ours, that we have those parts that broke. They're just.
No, they are replacement parts. They're, they're all items that you guys currently have, but they're deteriorated, and it's hard for the guards to be using them. Specifically, like the pole, the pole that they have right now, the guards, in order to get that kind of right in the middle part of the deep end, the guards have to get into the pool because they're using a shorter pole. And then the leaf eater is broken throughout, during the summer. I've kind of patched, patched it up using some parts from one of my leaf eaters that I had on my truck just to help you guys out, keep the pool clean. And then the vacuum hose is, like we've said, kind of just held together by duct tape at this point.
Okay, but that's all part of the manual cleaning. Then for the repairs for the robotic vacuum, you said that was going to cost $1,816.38. Just out of curiosity, how much is a new vacuum? And how old is our vacuum? Are we just adding new parts to something that other things are going to break next year? And would we be better off just replacing it? Or, you know, how much is a new robotic vacuum?
I would have to look up the pricing on that specific model. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's probably at least $4,000 to $5,000, maybe $6,000 for that size one.
The model you have is probably close to $7,000.
And how old is our robotic vacuum?
I would, I don't have that information. But it's probably a couple of years old. old. What, what was found and what we suggested to replace, we put that in, in order of importance. All the parts, uh, were the, the, the parts on the bottom. The top one was the most important was like the control box. So that was, that's like the brains of the unit is how, is I would explain it to me or to, to you all. And so, so it's kind of the control center that it hooks into. That needs to be replacement. And then there was, um, some other, uh, wear and tear items that were like the bags that go in the unit. They get, they get holes in them and it's just small, smaller parts, but it did add up, you know, but.
I just wonder whether we would be better off, I mean, I don't know what the availability is, but you know, it's like with a washing machine or anything like that. Do you just want to throw in a few new parts and then, or the.
No, this.
Way next week and then we'll be running through this all over again? Or should we?
No, it, it is designed to have replacement components. So, and it, and it's, and it, and your vacuum is, um, we don't need to send it away to be disabled. So we, we have it. You guys have a replacement vacuum right now. And as long as we order these components, we can put it back together and get it right back to you, um, in a timely fashion so that it's effectively, you're going to be able to be used as soon as, as soon as we return it to you and the guards can drop it in. It's a, it's a simple, simple change out of some, of some regular components that are just wear and tear maintenance items that you've probably had for two, maybe two seasons or three seasons. So, um, but I wouldn't expect it to be this costly every time you guys need to, need to use, use, uh, you know, to change a bag or to order some replacement bags. It's just you had, you had a couple, couple items that were worn, worn down.
And what's the lag time to get the parts?
Um, as soon as I have your approval, they, they're going to ship me these parts from, uh, New Jersey where the, the manufacturer distributor has authorized distributor. And as soon as I get those, we'll get, we'll get them installed and, and you're, you have them, have it returned to your, uh, facility so you, they can start using it.
But the distributor has confirmed that they have the parts available?
They do. They had, they had them, they had them in stock when I last checked. Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has anyone raised their hand?
No, just the note that, uh, Matt Zah posted noting that these are items that, that would be needed next year regardless of the extension of the season.
Okay. Thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve the purchase of a replacement pool, vacuum and necessary conducted equipment from American Pool and the other equipment, uh, telescopic equipment for the guards for a total of not more than $2,540.
Thank you. Is there a second?
That right through to seven, six, seven.
Councilor Bar, second. Is there discussion?
More than what? How much, Barney?
$2,540.
Does that include tax and everything? Is that?
Well, I don't know. What I heard them say is 1,816. We don't pay tax. Uh, $16.72 and I just added them together.
I just want to be sure that that includes shipping and so we don't get caught up in. I wonder if.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
I just wonder if we might want to make a slight amend, amendment and make it less than $2,800, just to be sure.
Shipping Pool should be able to answer whether the numbers that were given to us are sufficient.
Those numbers are sufficient.
Okay.
Do you wish to make an amendment?
No, as long as that covers shipping and everything.
Thank you. If, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve winterization plan for the town pool as recommended by American Pool in the amount of $8,196,027. Mr. Town Manager.
Sorry, muted myself. Um, just briefly, these are the recommended, uh, excuse me, recommended winterization and algicide steps that are taken. So there's, um, there's again, two, uh, pieces of paper that are in your packet. The first is a winter treatment and services, uh, recommendation. And so, uh, if you look on that, there's the total protection plan, which has algicide enzyme treatment and phosphate removal. And in addition to that, um, they recommend that we do the motor package, motor package C for 10 motors or more. So they're going to pull the motor, store it, install new O-rings, new seal, new bearings. So it's, it's the best package we can get to ensure that we get the best, uh, the, and the longest life out of these parts. And then the second, um, the second winterization is the anti-freezing chlorine, um, blowing out the skimmer lines, et cetera, that is listed as 2020 winterization items. Um, that total is $4267.42.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Not about the items, but I think when we get to the end of this, I would, I'd like to hear American Pool reiterate the things that it plans to do as part of its final win, winterization.
Well, why don't they, why don't you ask them to do that now?
That's good. As I recall, Charles, you, you mentioned that maybe there would be some pictures taken and some, something about systematic storage and so on. So if you could just describe beyond the things that Matt, um, Trolinger just read, uh, that you plan to do to make sure that everything is, uh, put away and catalog properly at the end of the season, that would be great.
Sure. Um, so part of our winterization process is, is, um, covering a pool of pools have covers, bringing it down to the correct winterization level. Obviously, we're going to delay all this until after the, uh, end of October 25th. But we're going to want to do it as, as quickly as possible for your facility just because of, you know, weather and, and everything else when you guys finally do close now. So now that we know when you, when you're closing, um, it, it involves usually moving furniture. Uh, we'll coordinate with the town as far as, um, any freshwater lines and bathroom fixtures. Uh, and, and a lot of that is, is in your contract, um, for winterization. But what, um, if you've gotten any of the field reports that we've, we've done over the summer, um, the winterization, we could, we're going to have a, we're going to close out that system and we'll have similar like photos of the pool is covered, the pool is lowered, you know, uh, the floats have been added and we can add in some pictures of the pump rooms have been, um, fully winterized. Uh, your pumps have been, uh, winterized. Uh, if you do the motor package, the, where the motors are, are stored and we can, we can do that. We can do it a number of ways. Um, in past, we've done it, you know, in person. We'll do a walkthrough with the property with, with a representative of the town or the pool committee. But with, with it being in the time of COVID, you know, we're happy to do that, this with, with photos and an, and email follow-up and say, hey, here's, here's what is, everything's done. Here's where it's located. Um, if that's something that you wish to do, or I'm, I'm sure we can figure out a way where we do it virtually, um, you know, it's, within a, appointment. Um, but that is something that, you know, we can coordinate and Jerry and myself will be happy to coordinate with, with, uh, whichever representative you wanted to do. So you know where everything is that you purchased, especially new equipment that you're just authorized, will have that safely stored on, on, onsite and, and locked down either in your pump room or in, uh, in a guard room or, or area that you, uh, that you want.
That'd be great because it's with so many different parts, it's really important that things don't kind of go, get lost.
Absolutely.
In this, in the kind of final shutdown process.
Well, that reminds me, I don't think we've, do we schedule another management team meeting? We'll be sure to do that tomorrow because this, this will be one of our topics.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Zieghauser.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No question.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Are there, uh,
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move the council approve the winterization plan for the town pool as recommended by American Pool in an amount not to exceed $8,200.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. And I want to thank American Pool for, um, being in attendance tonight and for their outstanding performance on behalf of the town in these trying times. And we look forward to our, our meeting. And I also want to thank our, uh, pool committee chair for his hard work this season, which has been extended. It's very exciting. And with that, uh, the next item, public hearing motion to approve the removal of the following town trees as recommended by the town arborists and, and ash at 5545 Warwick, a white oak at 5545 Warwick, a pin oak at 4716 Dorset, and two recently added trees, 5529 Surrey Street and Trident Maple and 4810 Essex Avenue, a pin oak, Dr. Feather.
Yes, the two, um, the true trees behind the pool are dead. I think everybody knows that. We probably won't take those out until the pool is closed. And I think they'll hold up until then. Um, I think they'll be okay. Um, and the, uh, Pin Oak at 4716 Dorset is half dead and has a lot of large dead branches and is also hollow. The, um, Pin Oak on Essex is, um, we actually planted a, a tree under that tree four or five years ago that's gotten some size to it as, as a replacement. We knew that was going to probably succumb sometime. And I think it's time to take the, the Pin Oak down. And then the one on Surrey was, uh, brought to our attention by a resident and, uh, it's actually hollow. And we want to take that down.
Thank you, sir. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Yes. What are the addresses of the two trees that you added?
4810 Essex and 5529 Surrey.
5529 Surrey.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Zieghauser.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Peel.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Circo.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Bar.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there?
No, no comments.
Council, you prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve of the removal of the following town trees, uh, at, uh, 5545 Warwick behind the town pool, 5545 Warwick behind the town pool, 4716 Dorset, 4810 Essex and 5529 Surrey.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. The next item is our building administrator's report. Mr. Lowmeyer. Thank you.
Good evening. And just a few things to go over on my monthly status report. At 5800 Deal, that holding, building permit expires on October 6th. Uh, the applicant seems to think he will be completed by then. Uh, today I sent him an email requesting an update on the construction, a status report and a list of the remaining items. So we're waiting to get that information back. At 4602 Dorset, the work has been completed and we're waiting for the, the county to sign off on their building permit. At 4917 Essex, that building permit will expire on November 18th. The contractor has been contacted and they will be submitting an extension sometime in October for the, uh, November meeting. At 489 Granton, that work is proceeding. And at, uh, 56, 5516 Trent, town issued a building permit on August 20th and that work is proceeding. Uh, that concludes my report. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I do have one Doug. On, um, the 4917 Essex, I've gotten a couple of emails about, um, whether or not there's a chimney on the plan. Um, and when I looked at the plans I have, you know, we don't get very robust, uh, versions of the housing plans and nothing I had showed the chimney. So I'm wondering, uh, whether anyone passed along to you the questions we've been getting about the chimney?
Yes, uh, we've looked at it. The chimney is shown at the rear of the porch on the site plan that was approved by the council, uh, with the building permit. Uh, and it was, that was approved as a field revision by the county to the plan. But the chimney was shown on the plan that the council originally approved.
Me, I'm not sure whether the ones that we actually physically got showed that because I don't have any that show a chimney.
I pulled up the plans that we used and it's on there.
How big are your plans?
Excuse me?
How, how big are your plans compared to the ones, the, the paper ones we get?
The, the full size of 30 by 42 inch sheets with the site plan.
Well, if it's clear, then, um, would it be possible for someone to respond to the query that's been, uh, asked of the town?
I, I sent, I sent Joan an email, um, about that. Um, if you, I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull it up, pull it up. If it's not on the site plan, it's, there's a, there's a rectangular bump out that shows the chimney and on the, on the site plan.
Porch? On the porch?
On the back of the porch, yeah.
I saw that rectangular bump out. I just didn't know what it was. Wasn't marked, was it marked a chimney?
Not on the site plan.
It wasn't labeled, but that's what it's referring to.
Just from my understanding, when we review, uh, building plans, how are we supposed to know, uh, like with a bump out, what it is?
Why don't we have the town attorney, uh, comment on this? Is that required? What's the regulation chimneys? I think that was one of the questions of the, uh, of the resident. I think.
You're muted.
Sorry. Sorry. I was muted. Yeah. Well, yeah, the, the bump out should be labeled on the site plan so that Doug knows what setback to apply. Because a chimney is afforded an exception to our, to the setbacks. And so is a bay window, porch, other, other bump outs.
No, I understand that. I just don't, I don't know how, but given what the council received, how we would ever know to ask whether that was a chimney?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit confused too, because it's something that, I, I, yeah, I, I, maybe we can have a, a larger discussion about what type of detail you want in the reports because it's something that conforms to the code. And so it's, I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, it's not clear to me what, to what degree things should be labeled, I guess, for the council.
Well, also in this case, I do think that the, and you'll get a chance, Councilor Circo. But I think in response to what Councilmember, Council President Shaw was talking about, I do think that the residents should be informed if there, if there was a violation of any kind or not. And then for the future, also can discuss whether any changes need to be made in the requirements.
Matt, can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr., Doug. Go for it.
Typically, if a chimney or a fire, uh, any, uh, projection is located near a building setback, I will point that out. But this one is way beyond. But this one is way beyond the twenty-foot rear building setback, so I didn't point it out as, as part of my report, because it wasn't anywhere near being violation or problem.
I guess what was kind of surprising is that it was a porch. That it's on a porch. I mean, I, porches are usually more open. So anyway.
Council President Shaw, in response to your request, we will make sure all this is explained to the resident. Thank you. Do you have any further questions? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zieghauser.
Yeah, I have, I, I have a couple of questions, Doug. On, on the, on the chart, it notes that you're waiting for survey and height surveys and is it typical, do we just wait, we just wait and people continue with their construction? As hoping that, that the height and wall check survey is correct? I mean, do we just allow the construction to mosey along even though they haven't received the appropriate reviews from the county?
Usually as soon as they get a wall check from the county, we get a copy of it and we check it. The height survey is a little different because the county doesn't require that until later on. We have been asking for it and the contractor told me last week that it has been ordered and it will be coming soon. But we typically, as soon as we see it's ready to be provided, we start requesting it. But I really don't have, I don't think we have any leverage to force them to give it under any certain time period.
So the construction that continues and everyone just keeps their fingers crossed that.
I think this is, I think this is an example of how the council might in the future advocate for a change in county policy or law. And so perhaps this could be added to the, the work session. Because this is a situation where we are at the whim of the county and there's, you know, it's sort of a, like a glitch and everything, so.
Yeah. And then my only other question, Doug, is about fifty-eight hundred deal. Is it your sense that they will be done by October sixth? Have you actually reviewed that property?
No, that's, I looked at it today and I discussed it with Matt this morning. That's why I sent him a email this afternoon requesting a updated status report with a list of what they need, because I don't think they're gonna make it. So once I get that report, we're gonna, I guess, probably tell them they need an extension.
Right.
He feels, he, he and his contractor told me probably ten days ago they were gonna make it. But looking at it today, I didn't think they're going to.
Yeah, they've, they've spent so much time on the outside of that house. It is just.
That's because there's gonna be a for sale sign on the property, my prediction. Do you have any further, do you have any further questions?
Wow, no, I don't. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Peel.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to return to forty-nine seventeen Essex. I just wanted to clarify where we ended up with that, because my understanding based on what I've heard from Doug and from Ron is that forty-nine seventeen does not actually have any kind of violation at all. And I wanted to sort of close the loop on that because the, the end of the discussion sounded like Jeffrey said that he was gonna notify the residents. And I wasn't sure if he was referring to the people who are building the house or the people who had inquired.
We're going to, I believe Council President Shaw was asking on behalf of the resident in her questions, and we will make sure that she gets all her questions answered.
Okay, but again, are we clear that we don't have any violations that we're concerned about based on the building permit?
The town attorney said.
That's, I wanted, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page on that.
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Serko.
So I'm, I'm almost on the same page as everyone else. And perhaps the issue with the chimney at forty-nine seventeen Essex is more an internal processing question, where maybe the large-scale drawings that Doug was looking at show the fireplace. But I, but I've just been reviewing, rechecking the drawings out again that were provided to us back on October fourth, twenty nineteen, the site plans and elevation drawings, forty-nine seventeen Essex. So these are the actual sort of three-dimensional drawings of the house from front, rear, left and right side. I, I don't, especially in the rear joint, there's no fireplace showing, unless it's internal. But I heard somebody saying it's a bump out. And then some of the other drawings. There, there's just, I, I'm concerned we're just not getting, we're not getting all the material that we need to and we're reviewing the documents. I guess that's more of an, an observation or a comment. And I don't have, it's, it's not related solely to forty-nine seventeen Essex.
Well, the town attorney has indicated there isn't a violation, but this might.
Mr. Mayor, I have not indicated that. I think the town manager and the building permit administrator indicated that the construction complies with the code.
Okay, thank you.
I've not reviewed that issue.
But this is also a topic that could be for future consideration for code changes. Councilmember Serko.
Right, exactly. And, and also perhaps just our internal process, which is hard in COVID to share large drawings. But maybe there is some way we can do it. Anyhow, just.
Problem, that's the problem with Zoom meetings, but well, so Matt and I will work on trying to address that the next time and.
That's all I have.
Plans delivered or something, we'll, we'll figure it out. So thank you. Did you have any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yep, I'm gonna stay on forty-nine seventeen Essex. We had actually concerns raised by two of the neighbors about this fireplace. And they are neighbors, which means that they must have seen the plans for forty-nine seventeen Essex themselves. And obviously, they didn't see the fireplace. So I don't know where the breakdown occurred, but the question is, should we check with forty-nine seventeen to make sure that the plans the neighbors saw did include the fireplace?
Mr. Town Attorney. What is your recommend?
I mean, perhaps Matt or Doug can answer the question as to whether the plans do show the chimney. I mean, I imagine
Or not the fireplace.
They do show them in the elevation drawings. Is that right, Matt or Doug?
The chimney is shown on the site plan in the proper location. But I, I don't know how we can ensure that the applicant presents all of the portions of a house to the neighbors.
But is it also depicted in a side elevation drawing?
It's in a different location on the side elevation, but according to the contractor, that was approved in the field by the county inspector. And I've asked for documentation on that and I haven't received it yet. But that was a change that was made in the field. But the site plan is correct.
So.
So the neighbors would have seen the, the site plan showing the footprint, but the elevations showed the chimney in a, in a different location. So the question is, then, you know, did the, under the town code, did the applicants meet their burden of providing complete application materials for their neighbors to review? I mean, the code requires copies of the same plans that are submitted to the county be shown to the neighbors, but then doesn't expressly require that to be repeated if there's a modification to the plans.
Didn't we, Ron, didn't we also look at that as a question of materiality at one point? I don't remember if we, I know we talked about it, but in any event, in any event.
Yeah, I mean, as it stands.
Yeah.
As it stands now, we require a new hearing before the council for a modification.
Right.
But the code doesn't expressly say if making an application, the applicant must go back to the neighbors and provide copies of the amendment.
Right.
Is there any, is there any recourse for the town or the?
Yeah, I, I don't think so at this stage, because the permit's already been issued and the work approved by the town.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any further questions?
Oh, yeah, when we approved the permit, was that with the chimney in its original location or in its current location?
The site plan that was approved showed the chimney in its current location.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, Councilor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item.
Can I, Jeffrey, can I do a second round of questions?
Yeah.
Just two things. I, I noted in Doug's report that we, they're working on four more properties. So I think this conversation is an important conversation in thinking about how do we make sure we really understand what's on the plans if we have a lot of plans coming in over these next months. The second question I have is one that was raised by residents in sort of an odd way, I think.
Wait a minute. So for your first question, who did you want to answer that?
I don't think it was really a question, more of an observation.
Okay, thank you. And your next, I'm sorry, you next. Go, go ahead.
The second is actually a question, and that is, is the town legally allowed to have someone like either Doug or Wayne on a property that's under construction? To actually look at the site? I mean, I know none of us should be wandering on sites and looking around, but is there anyone who has the authority to actually go on a site to see what's going on?
Yes. So it, it's typical for the authority to be set forth in the code that the town has the right of onsite inspection during the construction. It's also often stated on the application where the person signs and stated as a condition of the permit. And I don't know off the top of my head where the town's authority in that regard is expressly stated. Let me.
I think that's, I think it's important because there was a suggestion that was circulating among the residents that maybe residents should be authorized to.
No.
I know, I know. So from my perspective, I wanted to know who is authorized by the town to take a look, number one. And number two, how often is someone from the town actually going onsite, who's authorized, going onsite to make sure that what is supposed to be built is being built, especially when there are neighbors who are concerned about what's going on?
Okay, so Ron will definitely answer that. We'll get back to you. And then, but let's talk about that second item on your, on our, at our managers' meeting next week. Do you have any other questions?
That was it.
Thank you.
I guess I, I do think it would be important for Matt to, maybe just Matt, to respond to the person who suggested that, to make it very clear that that would be trespassing to the person who suggested that idea. Like, I don't want to just ignore that idea and pretend that we didn't hear it and that somehow people might think that that gives some kind of unspoken approval. I would like Matt to actually respond to that person and say, no, in fact, that's trespassing.
But, but he should have an answer which says, here's who's authorized to go onsite and they do it.
Answer as well, but I just wanted to be clear that that needs to be shut down as an idea.
Thank you. He will, he will do that. Thank you, everybody. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of bulk trash pickup on Monday, October fifth, two thousand twenty, and accompanying donation pickup on Saturday, October third, two thousand twenty. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, just briefly, in the past, we've held two bulk trash pickups, one in the spring, one in the fall. Last year, I know it was in the first weekend of October. So this is scheduled again for the first Monday of October with a donation pickup associated with it. A wider circle has offered to do a townwide pickup again that weekend. And I, I've written up in my report, if you wanted to make it more broad, I, I could follow up with Donation Nation as well to see if they could do a pickup on Sunday like they did in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
I think it's great if you can get both of them to come in.
Can you?
Yes. I, my.
Anyways, help you with your technology, because, because I'm sorry that you have to move forward.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Go forward.
So just, I think it's great to have both, both of them, if you can get them, just because it gives people the opportunity to give away more kinds of things. Wider Circle is, is pretty limited on, in what it wants to pick up.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zieghauser.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Serko.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Did any resident or, thank you. Council, if you're prepared to make a motion.
Move that we, the council approve bulk track, trash pickup on Monday, October fifth, and accompanying donation pickups on Saturday, October third, and if possible, also on October fourth.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to consider approval of reprogramming seven thousand dollars from reserve funds for the hiring of a temporary part-time special projects assistant to town staff. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I'll try to be brief. I included some documentation for you that explained my ask and the role I would envision for this person, the, the timeframe that they could help the town. This is not something that would be unique to Somerset. Several of the nearby municipalities have a similar arrangement, particularly as it pertains to document retention and archiving. So that, to me, is the primary function of this person, to help us get off the ground and put in place a, a state-approved and executable document retention policy. I do see that, actually, as Linda and I were going through some files the other, the other day, there were some old documents that suggested we may have, we may have tried to put together a document retention policy at, at several different times. None of them have actually been filed with the state. And there is at least one person in particular that works with several of the municipalities around here that has experience in archiving. Glenn Echo also suggested reaching out to the historical society and several other organizations around the area that might be willing to offer up some recommendations of, of local folks who could help with this work. I included one, one letter from the Communications Committee that asked the council to vote in favor of this proposal. And I just wanted to also say that I, I think there's an opportunity to assist in some of the things that other committees and town bodies are, are asking from the office and, and could help us complete them in a timely fashion and put in place good policies and procedures to, to make sure that they are better kept moving forward in a, in a safe and effective way. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Thank you, Councilor Zieghauser.
I guess my only question, Matt, is for you. You mentioned that there are a couple of people that are, have done this in nearby. that are, have done this in nearby towns and municipalities. Is that the right number? Did you check on the salary for that person? And are you in the right ballpark when we approve this number?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Peel.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilor Circo. No questions. Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, I hope 7,000 is enough. I mean, I'm saying that because with my wife, we just transferred all of the history files in town to the town hall. They are largely uncataloged, and though I have got a volunteer in town to start doing that, having someone on the staff who could also help with cataloging would be great. And the website is also needing a whole lot of attention, and somebody on the staff who could do that with Matt's supervision would also be great. So yes, we really do need some help.
But to be sure, as we monitor our funding, when, when we have the budget, and if more staff funds are needed, I'm sure that Matt will come back to the council for that. This is just a start for now. But thank you. Mr. Town Manager, did anybody raise their hand? I don't think so. Council, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we, the council approve reprogramming $7,000 from reserve funds for the hiring of a temporary part-time special projects assistant to town staff.
Thank you, sir. Second, is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is an introduction that has been recommended by the town attorney. And I believe that Council President Shaw is making the introduction. Is that correct?
No, I think that actually Ron is going to be making the introduction of this, at least Matt, when Matt and I talked about it.
Well, he can tell you, but you have, but he can't make the introduction. You want him to explain it?
Yes. I did note with enthusiasm that he, he added the porta potty discussion.
So at the council's last.
He will explain the introduction, but this is, but given the late hour, this is not for discussions, just for introductions. So please explain the introduction, Mr. Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the council's last work session, when we discussed potential edits to the building code as recommended by staff, we noted that there hasn't been a formal resolution approving the standard permit conditions that are attached to permits. So this resolution would do that. It would establish the standard list of permit conditions that will be attached to all permits so that when the council grants a permit, it need not state all of these conditions. These will just be the default conditions, and the hearing can just be focused on any special conditions that will apply. And the issue was raised, as Council President Shaw noted, because Doug recommended that we clarify the rules for the screening of portable toilets because that language has been unclear to applicants in the past. So the resolution will accomplish those two goals.
Okay, thank you. And Council President Shaw, you're introducing it, and you will write a, an article for the journal with the assistance of the town attorney, I'm sure. So thank you very much. The next item is the town manager's.
Question in terms of process, resolutions, are they like code amendments? Is that right?
No, resolutions can be adopted on the spot if you wish. They, they don't require the layover like an ordinance does.
I think we should just adopt this tonight because everything but the last item is already part of our conditions. It's nothing new.
What? I don't think that's a good precedent, given we don't really have procedures and.
And I do have a comment that I, you know, would like to share so that, to think about.
Go forward, go forward, Mr. Counsel.
Well, I mean, it, you know, this is a heck of a lot of conditions. If all you're doing is putting in a new air conditioner. In other words, this covers everything. But there are some permits that really only a small number of conditions apply to. And another way of doing it is to have core conditions that apply to everything, and then everything else listed, but there are options that you tick off when you issue the permit as they apply to that one. And I'm just saying that that's another way of doing it, and just have we considered that.
I, I don't think it would be a good precedent to pass something the night it's introduced without any kind of public input.
I'd so like to follow up on what Ron was talking about earlier about the authority and language for inspecting work sites and wonder if, if we wanted to add that to the list of default conditions if it's not already there. So I guess I would be in favor of deferring the conversation about this.
Well, Council President Shaw, did you, you, you wish to introduce this, correct?
Yes, I do.
So Councilmember Peel, whatever you wanted to add can be amended when it's, when it actually comes before the council.
Okay, well, my understanding was that Marnie wanted to introduce it and vote on it tonight, and we've already introduced it.
Well, it sounds like there's several people would like to wait till next month, so that's.
I think, I think that given what time it is, we should probably look at it with some fresh eyes.
Okay, thank you. So I would suggest that you write an article about someone. You could write it with the assistance of the town attorney. Thank you. The next item is the town manager's administrative and fiscal report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. One thing I wanted to point out in the tax distribution. We typically don't receive our first large tranche of money until October. So we, we won't have a good idea even when we have our quarterly meeting with the Budget Committee of, of where we stand revenue-wise. One, one thing I, I am optimistic about is that so far statewide, in, in terms of the distributions, the cumulative distributions have grown about 6% compared to last year's, last year's distributions. So this is, this is consistent with, I think, what we were expecting for the most part, which is that if we get hit with a, an economic blowback from pandemic, we probably won't realize that until at least next fiscal year, as opposed to this fiscal year. But that the moves, the moves that we're making and the savings that we are incorporating will still serve us well down the line. One thing I, I wanted to mention that is not on my administrative report that I wrote down is Montgomery County is putting together its 30-year general plan. And they recently reached out to Kensington for, for some comments on an unpublished draft report. And they've asked Kensington to distribute it to other municipalities for feedback on it before they submit their draft sometime later this month. Several of our neighboring municipalities have voted on their councils to send a letter requesting a delay in consideration of the general plan. In part because the numbers that, they started working on this back in April and were working with numbers that existed pre, pre-pandemic. So things like traffic and transportation are based off of numbers that don't take into account that ridership on Womata, for example, is reduced 95% right now. We don't know necessarily if that would be the case a year from now, but I was going to do some more research on, on this and look into it, but wanted to float the idea that if, if, if more materials were disseminated among the council, that, that perhaps this is something that we could take up at our work session in the middle of the month to consider if it's something that we want to join on and also request a delay in, in approving these plans county-wide. A couple of other things, just really quickly. I, Precision Concrete has finished throughout town. There's still a couple of spots where they're, they're going to come back and return, but hopefully everybody's had a chance to, to see the work that they did. And I think for the most part, it was very, is very good. And then finally, the, we, we got our election ballots returned. And so the Board of Supervisors of Elections is setting up a meeting to then, I think, as I had said maybe last meeting, to give a report and provide recommendations on election procedures moving, moving ahead. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking and take any questions.
Thank you. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Well, I did want to point out to the council, we are going to try and set up a meeting with the comptroller. This goes with the item, first item under the budget. And we are going to have to take a little time at our mid-month meeting to talk about the Audit Committee, which is related to the meeting with the comptroller. The other, I did have a question, which is, how, how are things going with the flu clinic? Last time Linda said she was working on trying to get more staffing from them.
We extended, we extended the hours, and it is filling up. I, I don't know, Linda, if you want to add anything specific, but it's, it's, it's been very popular this year.
No, that's, it's been very popular, which I kind of feared it would be given COVID. So I'm just praying for a nice sunny day under the tent and just trying to plan for everyone to get their shot and just kind of have a little social time, but at a distance.
How many people have signed up?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilmember. Okay, thank you. Councilor Zueg Hauser.
About how many people have signed up? Do you have any sense of that?
Approximately 80 to 90.
Wow.
Maybe more, yeah.
Say, I've had requests from people in other communities that are so jealous.
Really?
Yeah, because not to have to go in someplace.
Right, right.
But I assume we're not taking any outsiders, huh?
No, there are no outsiders. They're like, you know, just people saying, I guess, people who are living in someone's house, maybe a nanny or someone asking if they're nanny or so, so more, yeah. But no outsiders.
Okay, thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Peel.
I had something I wanted to ask Matt to do. It wasn't a question on his report. Is this an okay time to ask?
Go for it.
Okay, I just wondered if you, Matt, could, you and Linda could make sure that you publicize the early voting dates and things like that for Montgomery County, and maybe put a link for requesting absentee ballots on our homepage. And also wonder if we could talk at our work session about and the fact that we're probably going to have a polling place in Somerset. Usually Somerset Elementary School is a polling place. And with, you know, I, I hope even more people voting. Just maybe we could ask people who live in the neighborhood of Somerset to consider parking in their driveways on Election Day, just to make it easier for people who come into the neighborhood.
Having a polling place in Somerset?
Excuse me?
I don't know if it is.
Isn't Somerset Elementary School owns a polling place?
They haven't, they're not, they haven't, I don't think they've announced what all the.
They're, they're doing a much reduced number of polling places because they can't get workers.
Well, I didn't realize that they'd already decided not to use Somerset, but if that's the case, we have to maybe talk about something else, which is whether or not we can help people in our community get to the polls or drop off their ballots or whatever it is.
We'll find out, we'll find out and get back to you, but thanks for bringing that up. Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circo. No questions. Thank you. Councilor Barr.
Yeah, getting back to Precision Concrete, there is a brutal trip hazard still on Surrey, just north of the corner with Essex. I hope they are going to fix that one.
Yes, that's, that's one of the ones on our, on our list.
All right.
Yep.
Matt, isn't that where you were thinking about doing something different? Because the tree roots always push that up.
I had received a, a sample from a company that does essentially spongy concrete to put in those areas that can be put around tree roots so that instead of the, the concrete getting pushed up constantly, it, it conforms around the tree roots. So I could, I think at this point, we, we paid for them to get that one spot, so I think we should just go ahead with it. But I, I'd be happy to get a quote to see what it would cost to, to replace it, which would probably be a better long-term solution for, for that area specifically.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn, Councilmember Zueg Hauser wanted to see the office here. There is the fantastic quilt that was.
Love that.
At the.
I agree.
At the Friends of the Library. And I do want to point out that the, wait a minute. That, you know that at least four town residents have been on the board of the Friends of the Library. So, so there it is, and I want to thank Linda for, there's a very complicated way that it has to be hung. So I, so I hope everybody will come by and.
It looks really good.
Yeah.
Great. Jeffrey, show them, show them the other walls because it's so beautiful. I've seen them, but.
Well, also here is, so the late school board member Odessa Shannon, who is a friend of mine. I inherited this painting that she did like 50 years ago.
Beautiful.
Had it restored. So this will be very exciting when people use this in the future, because remember, this, this office and conference room is going to be, will be available for residents to use ultimately when we get regulations. So with that, I, the meeting is adjourned, but I want to remind everyone that this Sunday on Grandparents' Day is the Zoom newcomers event at 2:00. And then the, the work session, as you know, will be on next week, September 16th at 5:00 PM. So thank you, everybody, for a productive meeting and see you, see you soon.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Ron, have a good evening.